Okay. Let's get underway. Welcome, everyone. I'm Amy Reisner. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Lynn County. I'm also an attorney at Lynch-Dallas, PC. League of Women Voters of Lynn County is a nonprofit volunteer political organization which neither supports nor opposes any politician or political party. The League encourages citizen participation in government and is open to anyone 16 years or older. This forum is part of our educational efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections. We hope that over the course of this program you'll learn more about the candidates and what they hope to accomplish for Marion. So tonight we have two candidates. This is the Marion City Council at-large seat, and with me Grant Harper, welcome, and Paul Draper, welcome. So we are going to start with some of the procedures for the forum, and the candidates receive this information in advance. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. They will also have two minutes to answer each question. Opening and closing statements will be done, and we'll start here, go there, and then start with Mr. Draper and come back. We have timekeepers sitting in the front rows, and they're going to be waving flags at you telling you how much time you have left. I think there's a 30-second, 15-second, and a stop, so please try to stick as close to that as possible. Candidates will confine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from personal attacks. Turn your cellphones off, please, and thank you. If at any time during the forum you cannot hear, please raise your hand by waving at me. Probably be a lot easier than shouting at me because I may not be looking at you. Let's remain quiet and respectful throughout this process, please. No clapping, cheering out, calling out, with the exception, of course, at the end that you may clap. We request that you treat everyone, including the people you're sitting next to, fairly and civilly. You are encouraged to submit questions, and we've got some here, so there's pieces of paper and pencils down at the front, so you can write your questions down, hand them in, they'll be brought up. They are screening those questions, just not for content so much as just topics, to try to give me topics within a group. Last but not least, in the back, this forum is being recorded by Robyn Cash of Neighborhood Network News. Thank you, Robyn. It will be available to watch at the League of Women Voters Lynn County website, which is L W V Lynn County dot org. You can also check it out on the Neighborhood Network News website. That's W W W dot Neighborhood News, Network News dot com. And with that, we will get underway. So we're going to start with the opening statements for the candidates, and we will start with Grant Harper.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Grant Harper, and my wife Carrie and I have been residents of Marion for 40 years. Our two sons are graduates of Lindmar High School, and long ago in a galaxy far, far away, I used to do science instruction in this very auditorium during large group sessions. As a candidate for the Marion City Council, it's long been my objective to get involved and support the city. However, the last 17 years of my professional life, I was spending a lot of time commuting to and from Iowa City, and also with those professional responsibilities, it sort of sealed off the opportunities that I wanted to get involved with. So that has been part of the stimulus for me running for this position. I had an extensive utility life after I left education, and that consisted of seven years working on behalf of the Duane Arnold Energy Center as an emergency planner and supervisor of emergency planning. I subsequently went into field operations and was really involved with the largest industrial customers in the Cedar Rapids, Marion area, working on their service provisions and making sure that we were supporting them as they needed to be. I left the utility and business when Alliant was formed, and I went to work in complex project management, data security, privacy, quality management, and delivery of large-scale testing programs. And I think all of those are going to end up being experience-based that I can bring favorably to the city council.
Thank you. Paul Draper, your opening statement, please.
Yes, I am Paul Draper. I've had a few more birthdays than some of the other folks we have around here. I'm active in our community and have quite a list of things, and I've lived here 46 years. And 62 years ago, I married a little girl that I met at Southern Illinois University the first night at freshman class, and we got married four years later, and was lucky enough to raise two boys, both of them graduated here. And my one son is part of our business, which is Sheetz Force Draper Insurance, and my other son lives in Atkins, and he draws houses for a living. My interest with the city has always been broad. I spent 28 years on the Civil Service Commission. I've been president of the Chamber of Commerce. I've been on MEDCO. I've done a lot of things in the city that thank them, and the proudest of is the depot. I, one day, was sitting in my office, and I looked across the park, and I knew the Parks Department planned on building a building in the park. And I thought, well, why not? Why not that one? So moving ahead, that's what it ended up, with a great deal of volunteers, but I'm very proud of that project and will be regardless of what happens the rest of my life. Thank you. Sorry to run out of time.
Okay. Thank you both very much. Let's get started. We have a lot of topics initially about the future of Marion. So let's start with Uptown Marion because there's a number of questions that are centering on that topic. The first question, so we'll start with Paul Draper, is how much of your spending on personal goods and services happens in Uptown Marion? Might be easiest if you say, out of 100%, what percentage would you say? And then we'll have a second part to that question.
Yeah, I would say over 70%.
Okay. The second part of the question, then, is what are you spending it on? What are the types of businesses that you frequent in Uptown Marion?
I spend a lot of it on food. I'm a historian. I love antique shops, and I'm not beyond going in and buying things that I can use in the future at some point. So we were that. Used to be Rentfer's, used to be my men's clothing store, but anymore it's, we eat there almost once a day somewhere uptown.
Okay. And the same questions for you, Grant Harper. How much out of 100% are you spending in Uptown on goods and services?
I think it is focused mostly on restaurant and food activities, Zoys and the like. I would say unfortunately it's about 10%, but if I look historically, I think Paul just mentioned, made reference to the clothing store. When Irwin's was here, that was my main supplier for business clothing, and I was very sad to see that closed down. And so that, you know, necessarily then forces me to look elsewhere.
Well, the next part of this question is what do you wish would come to Uptown in order to draw more patrons to the area? And so we'll start with you and then go to Mr. Draper.
Well, clearly, I think that some specialty, perhaps, clothing stores would be nice. I think of all varieties, I think that there, the entertainment venues, the theater is one that we've partaken of. I think that there is a possibility for additional music venues to be put into the Uptown area. And I think, I don't want to sound negative against restaurants and eateries, I think that that also should continue, and perhaps instead of being so concentrated in one area, it would be nice that if there is some options that are on the periphery of the Uptown area, but still within walking distance, so that it stimulates a greater opportunity for somebody to have a night on the town, so to speak.
And Paul, what would you like to see if you had your preference to draw more patrons to the Uptown area?
I'd like to see the Boston store back. I'd like to see us have a store that had that sort of merchandise, like a dime store, and I think that would really, really be a handy, handy thing, and lasted forever, and was a great spot to shop, and you could find about anything you wanted there. I'd like to see, it hurt when Lilian's moved. I really enjoyed my wife and two going into Lilian's, and hopefully we'll have another ladies' ready-to-wear shop. We're on the right track, you know? We have the alley, and we have a lot of people downtown, and we just need more shops, you know? We just need shops that are carrying artwork, and shops that are carrying other than food. I wish we, like I said, the Boston store, that sort of store I'd love to have again.
So the last part of this topic is the question, what role should the city council play in creating a vision for Uptown and drawing new business, new entertainment venues to Uptown? So we'll start with you, Paul.
Well, I think the council, you know, we don't often hear about some of these things until they're pretty late in happening. I think we should encourage any, anything that's there. I am one who's always encouraging businesses in our brick houses. We don't have a lot of brick houses, and historically, they're very important to me. And I'd like to see city try to convince businesses to come and establish themselves in some of those houses.
Okay. Grant?
Well, I know that there's been the act of planning around, I think it's referred to as the Central Corridor. And I think there is a unique opportunity to dignify the Central Corridor in a manner that is different than what is being contemplated for out and around Tower Terrace. And I, you know, if you look at any, you know, major thriving vibrant community, you will see that it has multiple areas that each have their own distinct kind of character and draw certain kinds of businesses and activities into those areas. And so at the risk of maybe not answering the question precisely, my wife says I'm good at that, by the way. I think that we need to draw comparisons between the character and nature of what's going to go on out and around Tower Terrace, and then contrast that with a vision statement that can be then grabbed onto by businesses that naturally would want to gravitate into those areas. You know, I will be honest with you. I think there are some deep understandings and considerations that have already been established through council activity and the like that I do believe I need to come up to speed with. So I guess what I've just offered is preliminary in nature, but I need to dive into the details of what thinking has already been established.
Okay. Thank you. So let's talk now about the library. Of course, I printed off some Gazette materials, I know we've got some library folks here, about the plan to move quickly on the new building was the last headline that I think I saw. Holly Trinari here, the library director, talking about, you know, being an established part of this community and how important it is to get this new building off the ground. So a couple parts to this question. One is, do you favor the plan as proposed? And if not, why not? And we'll start there. And that would be with you, Grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think in general I favor the plan, but as a project manager, I look back on the path that we got to that plan, and I'm a little dissatisfied. Now, I say that knowing full well there are probably some deep project occurrences that caused changes, rather abrupt changes, by, you know, a pedestrian view, that resulted in businesses having to contemplate relocation or go out of business. So my concern maybe is more with the process and how that rolled out and the risk management and contingencies that might have been identified with a project of that scale versus, you know, what, where we sit today. And so I support it. I'm more critical of the process by which we got here.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I'm pretty consistent. I'm for the library. I enjoy going there. My consistency involves that, and I've told the library board, we own 11th Street. I'd like to see us build on that end of the building, right out into 11. Put two stories on it. Put your offices upstairs. Put all of your electronics down where you can get to them easily. And I, that's been my stance since we began. I am for the library, whatever we decide. We've not seen, by the way, this final new plan, so it might include 11th Street. I don't know. We'll see what it, we'll see what it says. But I think for the most part, you have a council, to my knowledge, that's in favor of library expansion or rebuilding.
Okay. Thank you. Let's talk about trails. So we're really on all the amenities that the city of Marion has to offer its citizens and visitors. So the question is, what are your thoughts on the C-Mar Trail? Is it something that you support? And if so, would you chip in some dough on the city's part? Paul?
Yes, I would. And I, you know, we've been fortunate in getting dollars for trails, and I'm, I have some that are dear to my heart. The one that goes under the highway and out by Waldo's Rock Park, to me, is a really important trail. C-Mar Trail's an important trail, and I hope that we can continue to get state, I know it's tax money or federal, and I know that's not tax money, to continue to build on to our trails.
Okay. Thank you. Grant?
Well, I'll preface my comments by saying it would have been in about the 1993 timeframe when Cedar Rapids was evaluating trails, and at that time I was in field operations for, at the time, Iowa Electric, Alliant's predecessor. And I remember taking a bike trip from basically up by the area where Sam's Club is, and we migrated our way all the way down to, I believe, our terminal spot was Ely. And the idea was, let's get, start getting a network of trails. And my involvement was, what's the utility think of it? Well, we had, we had a favorable view of that, and we also had to evaluate the trail running along utility rightaways. So fast forward to this question. I'm a supporter of trails. I have a German Shepherd that would be a supporter of trails. And so I think the prior session, there was a concern about care and diligence relative to culturally sensitive structures that might need to be considered in all of that. That goes into the project planning for trails, to identify those and to be absolutely clear about the disposition of anything that might be viewed to be project-sensitive. So again, I'm a little focused on process and, that leads to an endpoint.
Okay. Let's talk about parks, then. Investing in parks, it's a major attraction in Marion. I guess this is kind of a Goldilocks question. Does the city invest too much, not enough, or just right? And we'll start with you.
Me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, the skateboard park that was just opened up just off of 29th, that has become a magnet for kids, and parents are there, and in fact, I've seen some parents trying their skill. I want to caution them. However, I, so parks, do we spend too much or not enough? You know, this is a, this is a situation where I think really you have to look at what are the, what are the demand criteria for where you would cite a park and what is the nature of that park? And so as we have continued development throughout the city and the, you know, the growth is on the north end of town, there needs to be then a strategic plan relative to where the right density of population drives the sourcing and placement of the parks. Again, I hate to sound like a broken record here, but it's sort of a project planning process issue that derives, helps you derive the answer. And I think expansion or reutilization of existing park property is another facet of the planning. So I'm for parks, and I think, again, it is a, it's an ongoing strategic planning process.
Thank you. Paul?
I think we've done a great job on parks. I see in the future the city council trying to raise dollars for a water park. I think that's, that has to be on our list of forthcoming, and that is a new water park with slides and what have you. Where we would put it, who knows? But I think the council needs to start thinking about that a little bit and decide what we're going to do. The parks are great. They're used. I mentioned Waldo's Rock Park. If none of you have been out there, please go. It's the largest glacier rock in eastern Iowa, and it's out off the trail on 62nd. And the city just has done terrific, terrific on parks. The skate park is great, and you're right, stay off of it if you want to get on there.
Yeah. Paul, we're not getting that.
No, we're not.
That's all there is to it.
Not going to try that, but I think the city does a great job on parks.
Well, the next question actually dovetails into this topic, just came from the audience. And they're, they're basically asking, what do we have here in Marion that other nearby cities lack? Or I guess the alternate would be, what do we lack that other nearby cities have? And we'll start with you, Paul. You were talking about the water park, so you kind of tripped the trigger.
The water park. Well, I think parks would be a big item of that. You know, Lisle Park was a wonderful gift from an individual to a park. The Koppenstein Amphitheater was a terrific gift to the city. Not many towns have those. When we started trying to build an amphitheater, we made a lot of rounds. The city's looking for amphitheaters, and we, this is the one that we decided on through an architect. I think our downtown, our uptown is something that not many people, not many cities have. The Art in the Alley stands all alone. There's nothing else like it. We're going to have future entertainment on it, and I think the age of our building, if you look at them, most of them were built after a fire in 1888 when they were all framed. They're all brick now, and historically, I see my sign coming up, historically, they're very important to our community.
Thank you. Grant?
So I would agree that the things that we have that distinguish us, we have a uptown area that has a, I guess, a high development potential if we manage that right. And we can couple that with emerging, new neighborhoods, inflow of citizens. I think a lot of towns our size, perhaps, perhaps slightly smaller communities, you see their uptown areas, in essence, begin to diminish and decay. Well, it's clear we're trying to prevent that from happening. What do we need? Well, Prospect Meadows, we take some credit for. We have the amphitheater, as Paul was just mentioning. I do think that we probably need, I want to say, a medium-sized entertainment venue. And by medium, I'm not sure what that means in terms of seating capacity, but I think, given the space that we have, there is a possibility to situate something that can effectively be an alternative for music, plays, traveling troops of various types to compete with the downtown Cedar Rapids area. So I think that's a need.
Sorry, I've just lost my banner. And I probably can't fix it. Okay, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
Next question, while we're still kind of talking about vision for the community overall, someone in the audience just noted, and this is their question, so I'm reading, it's not my opinion. As the south side of Marion ages, the housing and commercial stock is aging with it, what is something that you would do to encourage responsible infill? And how do you see that happening? And we'll start with you, Grant.
Whoever wrote that question, it was tough. It's an important question. You know, I think there are a lot of very distinctive homes and commercial structures that ought not to go away, if at all possible. And so to the degree there can be a retention and an enhancement and a beautification, if you will, would be desirable. But I think then we need to also look at what is the availability of stimulating vibrant commercial activities to situate in that area? That's a hard question, and I don't think I want to say anything more because then I'll be treading well into my, into my zone of ignorance on this, but it would be something I'd want to get up to speed on.
Thank you. Paul?
I join your zone. I think one of the things we've had is kind of interesting, and that is we've had our city planner bill to bring the city council some housing on 60-foot lots. And the argument is that we have a whole section of town on 60-foot lots, and, you know, most of them are, are or could be in really nice shape. I know three houses that are, were built out of the Sears &amp; Roebuck catalog. I know three houses that are, were built out of the Sears &amp; Roebuck catalog that are sitting down on that south side. I had an old insured promise me that I would never, ever let her children tear her house down because it was made of wallet on the south side of our town. So, we have a lot of things down there that can be brought up to date better than they are, and hopefully, hopefully, people will buy them because they have children in the schools and utilize the school districts and the homes as homes and not rental properties.
Okay, we go from infill to landfill. Got a couple of questions here. First one, is the 2008 agreement with the Cedar Rapids-Lynn County landfill still in effect, or is there a plan to expand to another cell? And we'll start with you, Paul.
I was part of the battle while we had all that going on. And the landfill agreed at the time. They would not expand beyond that point. We, those of us, waited around for them to start looking at other sites. It never happened. Instead of that, they build a $10 million building. It's a great disappointment to me that this landfill is out there, it's blocking our growth to the north, it's polluting our city water. There's a benzine plume, and the first one that sends benzine through a six-inch sewer every day to the Cedar Rapids area water pollution system. And I, for one, am very, very, very disappointed that this landfill isn't out looking for a place or technology. There is technology coming in that they could utilize so we could continue to grow to the north side of our community. No one is going to want to live out there, believe me. And that's the one area we can grow to.
Okay, Grant?
Well, clearly, there's a conflict between the landfill's location and our growth pattern. So, that's just a fact. And I share the concern that Paul was mentioning. As I take it, since 2008, there's been little motion on behalf of the landfill to start looking for alternatives. And now, it seems their backs are against the wall, and they're coming and knocking on our door.
Yep.
Is that a fair synopsis?
Certainly is.
Okay. So, maybe there's a position that gives us what we ultimately want, and that is, they close it up, seal it off as they had originally committed, but gives them a modicum of breathing room with some very, very, very hard controls around that so that they can find that alternative that they should have been looking for over the last 11 years. Now, that probably is not a popular idea, but I guess the question is, if they have no alternative, how does that help anybody too? This is, again, one of those topics that I, well, undoubtedly, if elected, bore deep into understanding to try to search for an alternative or a solution that meets everybody's best interests.
Yeah, if you have something else to say, then we'll come back to Grant.
Well, thank you. What else I would like to say is that they have, they being a landfill, have interviewed all the city council except me, and they know I'm opposed to it. But in addition to the landfill, there's also a cemetery out there. There's 44 bodies in a cemetery that has to be protected, historic cemetery along the creek, and they've done nothing, nothing to protect that. And believe me, it should be cut, should have a fence around it, and should have names of people that are buried there. Many of them, yes, were from the county home, but they deserve a resting place as well as anyone else does. So, I, when it comes to the landfill, I'm a person who will fight you as long as Paul can breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments, as you've heard Mr. Draper's final words here on that topic, Grant?
Well, just to clarify my earlier comment, you know, is there some, I don't know what their absolute end, you know, capacity end date is. And, but, I'm going to make this up for the sake of illustration. Let's say it's 10 years, okay? Well, can we give them relief that allows them to do something for three or four years, which then they need to start working very aggressively to seek the alternative? And in the meantime, if there are sensitive areas that need to be planned for, that there's additional teeth that we invoke in terms of some criteria by which, if you do these things, we will give you extra time, but that time is not infinite. So, okay, I'll study up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to a far less controversial topic, and that is Marion Airport. And oddly, you're up. What is your position regarding the expansion and rezoning of the Marion Airport runways?
Okay, yep. So, I'm going to step back and answer, my initial portion of my answer will be from the standpoint of, what do we want Marion to be in 25 years? And what, how does an airport complement realization of that vision? Now, I would venture to say that if we want some, you know, medium to larger-size industrial concerns to be in Marion, they are going to have flight operations requirements in order to do their business. Well, that's not going to happen on the current airfield. Now, so, the question is, is to define a development scheme that extends over multiple years in order to achieve an operational basis that can be satisfied, satisfying to attracting industry into town. That may exist, hence, I need to go to school on that, too. But I don't know if this is at all a viable idea, and to use a phrase, I'm kind of spitballing it here. Maybe that's just simply the wrong location for a variety of reasons, the trail and the like. Is there a different location for an airport that meets the expanded needs of, or the future needs of the city? I don't know the answer to that question, but there I go. Another thing on my study list.
Paul?
I wouldn't know the answer to that one as well. The only thing I am sure of, those of you who know me know I'm into fast cars, that's something I enjoy. And I was lucky enough to go down the runway in a Shelby Mustang, which is a 230 mile an hour car. And believe me, I'd hate like the devil to land an airplane on that runway. It is terrible. And if we are going to develop businesses that want to fly people in here, say even Rockwell for a day, they could come in here, land, and go to Rockwell and come back. Right now, they come in and they, they land at Anamosa because fuel is cheaper, and then they truck them down here. So, I, a lot of it depends on Marion's growth future. We're doing great at the industrial park. It's growing, and we're getting a lot of good things out there, and maybe some of those folks will buy airplanes. I thought that we should be thinking about at least, thinking about the east-west runway and maybe annexing that so we could use that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to steal a question that you kind of dropped on us in the middle of your statement here, Grant, and that is, we'll start with Paul. What is your vision for Marion in the next 25 years?
Well, and I think what's happened in the last 25, it's almost scary, you know, we're 40,000 plus. When Paul and Carolyn brought our little tribe to Marion, we were about 14,000 to 12,000 to 14,000 people. I think Marion will continue to grow in numbers. Housing, it takes, you know, if you build a new house today, it takes the city of Marion about three years, I believe the figure is, to get any tax dollars off of that house. So, we're going to have to continue to build new homes, we continue to build condos. My wife and I moved to a condo 22 years ago, and I bet there wasn't 20 of them in town. And they're everywhere now. Condos seems to have caught on to what's going on. But I look for Marion to continue to grow. I think the uptown area is going to continue to thrive. I think every storefront will be busy. I just, that's why I'm running. I'm excited about what's going to happen in our future in Marion.
Thank you. Grant?
Well, I don't have wholly a dissimilar view. I think younger generations, however they are enumerated, I'd lose track anymore, you know, the younger folks are interested in activities that are recreational and less about maintaining a sizable hunk of property. And plus, there are folks in my generation that are thinking, well, at some point, I'm going to need to live in a townhome or a condo or whatever the case. So, I think that is a feature of our ongoing development. What I see for Marion going forward is that there are multiple pockets of commercial endeavor that each have their own flavor. Some of that will be standing kind of existing franchisees and the like, others might be more eclectic, local fare, and perhaps a mix of all of that. And I see some of that being contemplated in the planning that has gone on. But I see that there will still be traditional residential neighborhoods. I see that there, I envision that there may be higher-end neighborhoods, and there will be neighborhoods that are geared around more moderate-income folks. But I see it getting bigger, and I see that the commercial concerns are going to demand then that the city provides certain amenities, and which, one of which is the airport that we just talked about.
Okay, thank you. Let's talk taxes next. Can you explain to us your understanding of Marion's tax levy rate and why you believe it is either too high, just right, or too low? And we'll start with you, Grant.
So, city finances, another one of those study up-ons, but I went and polled and looked at the allocation of tax authority groupings and distribution of tax by authority. And I see that the city of Marion makes up for us personally about 35%. Lynn Mar is 45%, Lynn County is 14, of the total tax burden that we pay on an annual For some reason, that doesn't seem to be burdensome to me. Because I, if we were getting nothing for that, it would be burdensome. But what we see is a vibrance in the community, a development, a drive, an interest to redevelop certain areas or get businesses situated, and so therefore, I, it just doesn't, doesn't cause me any heartburn. Now, it was mentioned at the earlier session about, about roads, conditions of streets and curbs and the like. Well, I think part of how we manage attention to the routine maintenance that is funded, obviously, by the tax funding, is that we, we have a very clear delineation, something that is easy by the layperson to consume, about where the priorities for road reconstruction, sewer, this, that, or the other thing. I think more simplistic communication on the needs that we've identified and are working on will reduce the angst relative to anybody who might feel bad about that tax number.
Okay. Thank you. Time's up. All right, Paul?
I think one of the biggest items the council has discussed over the last five years have been roads. And I know that we have discussed now about not only doing the roads, but the curbing. In the past, we've gone in and we fixed some of the roads, but we haven't done much with the curbing. So, I think, now, in your order of things, you have water, roads, you have sewage to worry about, and those are all items as our city grows. Our water supply is something we're going to have to address fairly quickly. The federal government is kind of limiting the amount of water we can take out of the aquifer, so we have to figure out where we're going to get more water. But I think that as far as roadways are concerned, that we will, they're number one on our list. When you make our, we make our list out, roadways are number one, and they'll continue to be.
Okay. Second tax question. Can you identify an area in which the city spends too much money on something that isn't needed, and what would you do about it? And we'll start with you, Paul.
Nice salary. No, I think, I think the city, I don't think the city spends too much money on much of You know, we, we get a lot of money through the state and federal grant, pardon me, grants. If we can keep that up, we can continue to grow. Our Terrace Road is some example of what we've been able to do. And was that, did we spend too much money on that? No, I don't think so. It's going to be a great road when it's done. So, things that maybe people think a little bit about that we're spending too much money, we really aren't as an end result, and as we move forward with them.
Thank you. Grant?
From a somewhat pedestrian view, I don't know that there's any one thing that I've been able to identify that says either we're spending too much or too little money on. But again, somewhat going back to my prior answer... But again, I, sort, somewhat going back to my prior answer, I, I think having a easier, more digestible form of priorities list that, that somebody who's not a project manager can appreciate will help them then gain a feeling that we're spending about the right amount of money on, on most things. I think, I'm going to stray just slightly off topic for a second, but Paul, you mentioned Tower Terrace. I, I can see Tower Terrace from my deck. And I've been, you know, I've watched it over the couple of years that it has taken the sections to get built. And I, and I have, you know, inquired about, well, what's the schedule for this? And the answer was, well, it's kind of developer-driven. And I found that interesting because in my neighborhood, traffic was going down my street because of the absence of something like Tower Terrace. And so I had an interest to see that completed, as I used to say, at pace. And I think we have a great opportunity in our communications of what's going on to, for certain levels of projects, be very clear about what their intended project is, or their project schedule, so that people can appreciate what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. New topic. What would you do to help Marion become more welcoming to African-Americans and other minorities? And that assumes that you think that's a problem, so I'll throw that out there. And that starts with you, Grant.
Okay. Landfill, airport, okay.
Yeah, now diversity.
I think I may, need to make a statement about my personal perspectives. I try to be colorblind. I try to be, you know, gender neutral, you know. I, in terms of sexual orientation, that's personal business. I have close family relatives who are gay. None of it makes any difference in the final analysis as far as I'm concerned. So I just put that out there as a foundation piece. We have a gentleman who lives, he, he and his family lives up the street from us, and he is Haitian. He and his wife moved to Florida, and now they're here. And I think he is, he's, he, he works for Collins Aerospace. You know, I think the suggestion from the earlier session is to promote greater diversity in city employment is a start. I think to the degree that can be encouraged with our school district, districts, or accentuated is a start. You know, this is, this is something that everybody wrestles with, all communities wrestle with, to be inclusive and inviting. And I don't think there are any, there's no single solution to achieving that, but I think consistent effort to do so is what is successful. So now if you ask me, what does that consistent effort look like, I'm going to tread into ignorance for the moment.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Well, I, I think, you know, our citizenry unquestionably has changed. Has there been a problem? No. You talk to our Marion PD, and they'll tell you they're not having problems there. Yeah, they'll make a few stops, but they stop a lot of us. So I think, I think that, you know, as this, as we grow, we are going to have more diversity. And that's fine. That's part of, that's part of growing. And I, I have no arguments with that whatsoever. I, I'll go along with it. I'll live with it. And if I have a black fellow move, move in next door to me, he's going to be a welcome neighbor. So I come from Southern Illinois. And Southern Illinois were black and white. So I was raised that way, believe me. And I, I'm still that way.
Thank you. Next question. What role did your own education play in your professional development and/or political interests? Paul?
What my education?
Yeah. What role did your education play in, in your development as a person?
Well, I, I, I did graduate from Southern Illinois University with a business degree. And I feel like with that, I learned to budget. I learned a couple of things I kid the city about when I look at a 140, or, yeah, $144 million bond issue, or bonds. I said, the thing I remember when I was in business, I borrowed a lot of money. The thing I remember most is I always had to pay it back. And that's the thing that I think I learned the most. And running a business is not that different than a city, other than you have a great number of employees and a great deal of activities in the city where you don't in the business. So I feel my education was very helpful at, at Southern Illinois University.
Okay, thank you. Grant?
So I graduated from Westmar College in Lamars, Iowa, which was a great shock for a suburban Minneapolis kid to go to rural Iowa to a small Methodist school. Westmar, by the way, is no longer there, and my educational records are housed at Iowa State. But I majored in biology and had a, effectively a teaching minor in chemistry. And I think that besides readying me to be a science educator principally at Lynn Mar, but preceded it for two years in Norway, Iowa, it gave me the ability to look and at, at problems and analyze for solutions. And I think when I left education and went into nuclear emergency planning for the Duane Arnold Energy Center, that problem-solving and analysis was put to a great test. And again, when I moved into field operations for Iowa Electric and working with our large industrial customers in the area, I had to learn things that I didn't even know I really wanted to learn. Code generation systems for, an electric code generation system for what is now Ingredion Downtown. It, it was an amazing project, but I had to learn the salient portions in order to be successful in its ultimate delivery. So I think the ability to learn something new and to process what's important within that frame of reference is how my education has benefited my professional development over time.
Thank you. Well, before we go to closing statements, I have a burning question now in order to differentiate these two candidates. We've learned, Grant, that you have a dog, a German Shepherd, right? Are you willing to share the, the dog's name?
The dog's name is Zeus.
Okay. Is that your only pet?
Yes, for the moment.
For the moment. Okay. So are you a dog or cat person, Paul?
I am a dog person.
A dog person.
His name is Gus. And he's a winter dog, and he's about that long, and he controls our household.
Okay, I'm sorry, dog, dog. That's what we've got. All right. Well, thank you both very much. I, I've found this very interesting, and I, I just so appreciate the thoughtful responses that you provided today and the great questions from the audience. Let's go to closing statements. And we started opening with Grant, so we'll start the closing with Paul.
Well, I've had a lot of people ask me at my age why I'm running for the city council. Over the last seven years, I have attended 92% of all council meetings. I, I'm an active person in our community. I go to council meetings. There are some things I can't do anymore, yes. I can't walk up a hill to break ground without having some problems doing that. But I love the city. I've been active in the city since, since I can remember, you know, 28 years civil service. I hired every city policeman that we have. I hired our fire chief, which I am very proud of, that we have the only lady, fire chief in the state of Iowa. And I was part of the Civil Service Commission that hired her. So I love it here. I'm not going anywhere else. We don't own property in Florida anymore. We've been very, very fortunate at our age that we've been able to travel most of the world. And this is where I want to be, and I want to be part of it. I want to grow with this community, and I want to watch it grow around me. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant?
Well, I wish I could say that I possess the depth of community knowledge and, and longstanding service that Paul has established. But it would be a pleasure to be sitting here at some point in the future at your age, Paul, to have, be able to reflect, to be able to reflect that I had achieved some, something similar to what he has. My objective for this, and I said this in the intro, just by virtue of professional demands and commuting back and forth, I, you know, for 17 years, it kind of sealed off what my attentions were going to and, you know, traveling, skittering off to hither and, and yon for business commitments. And now that I am retired, according to my wife, I have way too much free time. And so I want to be of service, and this is my, my entree into that. I think you have gained a flavor of my interest. I'm kind of an old crusty project manager. And I look at things from the standpoint of scope definition, planning and execution to achieve that scope, the risk elements that are, are associated with the scope, and the contingencies that are in place to mitigate those risks. And I think Marion has some big stuff to do, and I think my perspectives from a project manager standpoint could be of benefit to the council's deliberations. Thank you all.
Thank you. And thanks to you for attending. You, you may applaud now. It's not even the end. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Lynn County for hosting this event, and thanks so much to Robin Cash.